Well, we'd like to start, but it takes five of us to get started legally. So, we're gonna wait one more, at least one more, to enter the room. All right. We'll go ahead and get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Lee Cooper is the pastor at Missionary Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Dr. Cooper, if you would step to the microphone. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Greiner, he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Shall we pray? Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for this day that you've allowed us to do your bidding. We thank you for wisdom. We thank you for faith. Even now, God, we look to you, knowing that you're the author and finisher of our faith. And so, God, we ask that you would lead us in wisdom and knowledge. Father, you've said in your word, if we lack wisdom, all we need to do is ask. And so, God, we pray your blessings and your leadership on this council and on this great city of Oklahoma City. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In addition to giving our invocation this morning, Dr. Cooper serves us on the planning commission. So, Dr. Cooper, thank you for that service as well. I also want to note, in the back of the room today, we have, I believe it's 22 students who have come to us from France. They are visiting students, spending a couple of weeks here as guests of the Class and School of Advanced Study. So, how about a round of applause from those of the United States? We are glad you all are here, and I'm sorry we have Canadian weather for you while you're here, but I hope you're enjoying your stay. And fortunately, you're here for a couple of weeks, so I'm sure there's gonna be a few nice days of weather sprinkled in there. We also, this morning, have an opportunity to honor Shawna Street. She is our Employee of the Month. I would like people to keep in mind, we have over 4,000 employees working for the city of Oklahoma City. So, when we select one to honor, it is quite an honor to be selected. And Shawna, I'll ask you to come forward. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Shawna D. Street has been a city employee for two years and five months and is an Executive Assistant One in the Administration Division of the General Services Department. Whereas Shawna assists the Director and Administrative Manager with research, reports, scheduling, and correspondence, she also compiles department reports for two division heads and prepares PowerPoint presentations when needed. Whereas Shawna enjoys a challenge. When told it can't be done, she persevered through much trial and error to set up a program to generate certain reports from the City Works Work Order System, which ultimately saves the city money by more efficiently managing two extremely time-consuming tasks. Whereas Shawna designed databases for the department to elude supervisors when their employees' required licenses are about to expire, and then tracks the testing required to renew the license. Whereas Shawna has a full work schedule every day, yet she is never too busy to answer questions or help other employees. When asked to do something she has not done before, she is quick to say, "I'm not sure how to do that, but I will find out and take care of it." And she does exactly that. Whereas Shawna is patient, professional, and helpful when responding to citizen calls for information. She keeps a copy of the Guide to City Government handy with pages marked for frequently asked questions. Whereas Shawna's diligence, dedication, determination to satisfactorily complete every assigned task, willingness to help others, desire to master new skills, and her consistently cheerful and confident attitude contributes to the morale of the entire department. Whereas this council desires to recognize Shawna D. Street for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Shawna D. Street, December 2014, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation of Shawna and her coworkers. And Shawna, the suspense continues, because we need a resolution so we can vote on this. So, do we have a motion in a second? Cast your votes. And it's unanimous, so congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I wanted to start by thanking Paula Falkenstein for the nomination. And I just found out before Thanksgiving that I was gonna get this, so I got to tell all my family that was from out of town and my friends. And I was so excited, I even told the cashier at the checkout at the grocery store. So, I'm really excited. I am truly honored, and I'm very grateful and proud to work for the city of Oklahoma City. So, thank you so much.
Let's show our appreciation and our gratitude. Thank you very much. Congratulations. We're on item three of the council agenda. I'll look for a motion on the appointments. Item 3B and C. I hear a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item four is a Journal of Council Proceedings. A is to receive the journal, and four, B is to approve the journal for November 4th.
Move the item.
Is there any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, starting on page 15, item eight, C1, 8C1 on page 15, CE891. The applicant is requesting that be deferred two weeks until December 16th. Again, that's 8C1.
December 16th?
That's correct. And then still on page 15, under item 8A7, yes, that was actually first, SPUD 781, 8A7. Staff is requesting this item be deferred until December 30th due to a notice error. Again, that's SPUD 781, item 8A7. And then moving to page 18, under item 8H1, item E, 1818 Northwest 13th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has repaired. Item H, 320 Southeast 21st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And item N, 2716 Southwest 123rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. There's a new owner. And then moving to item 8I1, item H, 2501 Northwest 14th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item T, 1442 Northwest 46th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item W, 2133 Southwest 77th Street, we ask that that be stricken. There's a new owner.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances?
No, Mayor. If I could just make a comment back to C1, I think it would be a really good idea in the two-week deferral that we have, Planning and Public Works meet together on that matter.
Yes, I agree.
I think that'd be terrific. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's process the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. All right, comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC PPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Is there any individual consideration?
Your Honor, I have a couple of quick questions. On items X, 6X, 6H.
X and H?
6X.
Okay.
And Mayor, I had two items, 6O and 6AK1.
All right, Pat, you wanna get us started?
Yes, Your Honor, on the X, on H, 6H, we are accepting the dedication and some easements, you know, final plaid of a subdivision. And it says the subdivision boundary was not required, and I wonder, what are the limits? When do we require those, and when do we not require?
I don't know the answer to that. Maybe we can get someone in here from...
There's no hurry, and whenever it's convenient. No, no. And then on X, the, I believe it's X, all right, let's move, please. I had a little jet lag with my orders. Yeah, this one was 6X, and it's acceptance of public easement dedication. And I didn't understand the timing. We accepted the, we filed this stuff back in 1975. We're just now accepting easement. What, is there something that we did wrong, or somebody did wrong on this thing?
Mr. Councilman, I think this was just an item that came to our attention, and we noted that it had not ever been received by the city council. There is some need to actually accept that property now for public drainage easement, and so that's why we're bringing that before you today. It's just a record that we could not find, and we're doing it with your assistance.
This is a little cleanup work, man.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
It may have been done, we just couldn't find the records. Or if it had been done, we're just covering our bases.
All right, Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. 6O, I think, is a very simple typo. This is a final specs advertised for bid for some street repairs when the damage is more than our street maintenance division can do. But in paragraph three, where the amount is specified, it's a not to exceed, and I believe it's a million dollars, but there's a missing zero. The way that...
There's a missing zero. There's only two zeros between the two commas. There should be three. You're correct.
Good, so let's just make sure that that is corrected in the minutes. And then 6AK is a landscape maintenance improvement agreement with American Fidelity Property Company, and I just wanted to recognize them. This is a five-year agreement that allows maintenance of the Flag Plaza and the related medians from Northwest 48th Street to Northwest Expressway. And American Fidelity is such a great corporate citizen, they have been for such a long time, and I wanted to recognize their generosity in providing enhanced streetscaping and landscaping for us.
Yeah, it is a good project. Any other comments on the consent docket?
Mayor, we have a citizen under AL1.
Okay. Two people have signed up to speak on the, let's see, on A, AL1, which has to do with the, on the municipal councilor's office, and this has to do on a confession of judgment? All right, Philip Kulp and Andrea Truslik? Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, come on up. Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Philip Kulp, 928 Southwest 32nd, Oklahoma City.
Okay.
Andrea Trubach, 928 Southwest 32nd, Oklahoma City.
Okay.
I only filled that out because I didn't know if we needed a speaker or not, depending on how you guys voted, I guess. I didn't, we can take the opportunity if we needed to speak, I didn't know.
It's on approval.
Okay, so this is on for approval. And so, we are getting ready to pay them. Is that right?
It's recommended for confession of judgment.
Okay. So, it sounds like you're good to go.
All right, thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you for coming down. Everybody ready? All right, vote the consent docket. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, move on to the concurrence docket. All right. All right, any individual considerations on the concurrence docket? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Concurrence docket passed unanimously. Moves us on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll begin with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Eight. It's an ABC issue at 6432 West Memorial Road. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Did anybody sign up? This was approved by the planning commission and is in an area where there's a lot of restaurants along Memorial Road. I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is an ABC issue in Ward Five. The address is 3,000 Southwest 104th Street. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. No one's here to speak on this, and it's been recommended for approval, and I would, by the planning commission, I'd recommend approval, and then I'll also ask for the emergency.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
And then, if we can vote on the emergency provision, Your Honor.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. Emergency passes 8-0.
Thank you.
Now on to item 8A3. It's an ABC issue in Ward Three at 335 South Mustang Road. Larry?
Yes, Your Honor, has anybody signed up for this one?
Yes, sir.
It's been approved by the planning commission, and there were no protests, and no protests here. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on 8A3. It passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward Eight at 14001 North Council Road. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new plan unit development. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Did anybody sign up to speak on this one? Okay, this is a continuing area of development, and I see Tim Johnson's here. Tim, you like to say anything, is there any questions that we can ask him? He's representing.
Tim Johnson, with Johnson Associates, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions on this particular application?
No.
Here you are, and I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8A4. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A5 is also in Ward Eight. The address is 15500. It's on North Rockwell Avenue. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new plan unit development. Pat?
Does anybody sign up to speak on this one? This one was approved by the planning commission. I would move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on item 8A5? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A6 is a rezoning in Ward Seven at 16300 Northwestern Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family residential and a plan unit development, and it would become a new pod of approved. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk. Has anyone signed up to speak? Planning Commission approved, so I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second on item 8A6. Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Item 8A7 has been deferred until December 30th. Item 8B is a zoning case. It comes to us in Ward Eight. It was recommended for denial at the planning commission. The address is 19300 North May Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become a new plan unit development. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Did anybody sign up to speak on this one? Bob Keener, can you tell us, give us a brief reasoning why that our planning commission...
Basically, the planning commission was concerned about adding multifamily in this tract adjacent or next to those residential platted homes.
We've gotta have multifamily as part of our planning dock in the city.
Well, it is one of the, the plan projects multifamily, mixed-use residential, and it is one. But the planning commission felt in this case it wasn't appropriate there.
Okay, we have Representative David, you'd like to say a word or two about this one?
Yes, David Box, 522 Callcord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. And also with me is Mr. Chris Anderson, on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD that we spent great time and care dealing with. My client owns a significant amount of property in this area and has developed a significant amount of property in this area. The residential that surrounds it northeast into the east is owned and being developed by the same applicant. And they have a desire to have a full community with everything from commercial, office, single-family, multifamily. If you go further to the east, there's additional multifamily, or excuse me, additional single-family. So, when we came in with this PUD, we were sensitive to make sure that the multifamily element, as well as the commercial and office, were consistent with everything else out there. And we looked at the plan. And when you look at the plan, and you see that this is on a major arterial, in order to make commercial work in this area, my client was getting feedback that you need more density. You need something like multifamily. And so, what we've done is, we've created a PUD where we have the high-intensity commercial right there in the corner, and as a step down before you get to the single-family, we have a mixture of office and multifamily. That's consistent with the plan. That's why staff, we believe, recommended approval, because it is in conformance with the plan. So, with that, we were hopeful that we had a PUD that was consistent with the desires of the plan and the city, and would create a workable and nice development. There were a handful of TEs that we weren't able to address at planning that I do need to address. We are in agreement with one, three, and four. TE number two, the only issue is on screening. My client doesn't want to have screening between residential and residential. They would like for the multifamily and the single-family to have just what would normally be, I guess, a fence on the backyard of the existing single-family, but they don't want to create a large barrier wall between the multifamily and the single-family. So, that, other than that, we are in agreement with one, three, and four.
And the size thing's been resolved?
I'm sorry?
Size of the signs?
Yes. My client is in agreement with the eight-feet monument size.
Thank you, David. Are there any questions, David?
Does, the PUD doesn't restrict the density at all?
Correct. It reverts to the use unit, and the code itself restricts the density.
I mean, I think in the future, when we go this far out on the city, the density should be restricted, so it's not too dense. And, you know, you said that to make the commercial work, we do need more density, which I completely understand that concept, but kind of where did, you know, I think there's a certain level of density that's probably required to make commercial work, and I think that that's what, through the PUD application, I think that that's a good use of the PUD is to restrict that density. But those are just my thoughts.
Are you suggesting, James, that we would restrict it less than the code indicated appropriate?
Yes.
But you have no problem with this one?
I mean, I don't particularly like it, but that's, I just don't particularly like it, yeah. It's not that I'm against it, I just don't really like it.
Like and dislike, we...
Well, I'm certainly with James. I think this is an unfortunate consequence of spending tens of millions of dollars widening streets, not just widening streets, but putting it at the first of the 2007 bond projects. And that's exactly what he cites as a reason to go forward, and I just think it's unfortunate.
Well, I think we recognize that there are some savings to be recognized, realized, rather, by the construction, before it's built up in terms of both in money and irritation to our citizens. At any rate, I would move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve it.
So, a vote, an affirmative vote is what?
Is to approve the request for a rezoning.
It has nothing to do with the bond issue?
To deny, but the motion is to approve it.
And I can address, if you'd like, why they voted to deny it. They didn't give us an opportunity to present the merits of the application. When they looked at it, the question was, get rid of the multifamily. And my client believes that multifamily is appropriate. When you look at the zoning out here, there is some existing multifamily zoning in the area. And what we're concerned about is the city is the clustering of multiple units of these large multifamily projects. And that is not at issue here, because what you see around it in the immediate vicinity is the R1 single-family. When you look south, it's a 640-acre development. That 500, I think, 95 acres is all single-family. To the west of that is another 640-acre development, which two-thirds of that is single-family. And what you'll see is, the retailers won't go to areas unless there's something higher in density. And what planners will tell you is, over time, when you just have a sea of single-family, that will deteriorate. You need a mix of uses, and that's why this is urban growth. And that's why urban growth calls for an intensity of use higher than what we would normally have in the past.
Urban growth on 192nd Street?
It's a very dense area out there.
All right, ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Passed 6-2.
Thank you.
Item 8C has been deferred until December 16th. It's item 8C1. Item 8C2 is an easement that's been recommended for closing in Ward Six. Meg, you okay with this?
Yes, Mayor, I am. This is West Park Place between Walker and Hudson, in an area that's got a ton of development. It's a badly deteriorated street that needs some work done on it, and so, the proposal here is that this become one-way, which is almost the only thing you can do right now with the roundabout there, and provide for increased on-street parking. And I did just, Bob, I had one quick question on this one. I just wanted to be sure that, there was a comment that the easements needed to stay in place? And that OG&E had an issue?
Yeah, they'll have to negotiate to make sure that they have adequate access.
Access, okay. That's the way, I just wanted to be sure that the property owners realize that we needed to make sure the easement stayed in place. I would move approval of this.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 8C2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D is a series of issues that have come to us from the Traffic Commission. The first is in Ward Six and deals with some two-hour parking spaces. Meg, you okay with item 8D1 and 2?
Yes, Mayor, these both have to do with spaces near the federal building. The request came to us from them. I would move approval.
Okay. We've got three of them there in Ward Six, but we'll have to vote on them separately, so I'll take that as a motion on item 8D1. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now 8D2?
8D2, I'd move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 8D3?
And 8D3, move approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 8D4 and 5 are in Ward Two. Ed, you okay with these?
Traffic Commission, and there was no protest.
All right, so that's a motion on item 8D4. Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. How about 8D5? And a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding our new mechanical code with a presentation last time. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 8E, which has to do with the city's new mechanical code? Is there a second? All right. Cast your votes and move this item forward. That item moves forward. And then item 8H has to do with our new plumbing code, and again, we had a presentation in our last meeting, and this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item, oh, this is 8F. I said H, but it's F. 8F? Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 8F? All right, how about a motion then to move item 8F forward? Cast your votes. And that item 8F moves forward. Item 8G, modifications to our retirement system. Wiley's around to answer questions, if anybody has any. Otherwise, we'll just take a motion to move it on. Item just being introduced today, set of public hearing for December 16th.
Just a quick question, Your Honor.
Then there'll be a final adoption on December 30th. Yeah?
Is this a change that's required by federal law?
Well, let's ask Wiley.
Yes.
Is this a requirement of federal law? Are we...
It's a requirement of the IRS Code. In order to keep our plan tax-exempt, we have to comply with IRS regulations. And the regulations require this change, and it's in lieu of the 10th Circuit striking down Oklahoma's DOMA law.
Okay. All right. How about a motion? And we're just introducing it today. We're setting a public hearing for December 16th, final adoption on December 30th. All right. Cast your votes on 8G. Item moves forward. Item 8H is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8H? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay.
E... Or, excuse me, K.
On KH... 8HK?
Yeah.
All right. Charles?
The owner of that property contacted me yesterday and had indicated that he had plans to demolish the property, but he's having trouble getting the demolition permit. He had all the approvals except the one from us. If you could look into that. He doesn't want to continue... He's going to tear it down anyway, so...
That'd be fine. That's... They have... He'll have the next 30 days, we'll get him taken care of. Is he going to contact us?
He'll probably be contacting you, or... I suspect his information is somewhere in our process, because he indicated...
We can have Charles make a contact.
Okay. You can get ahold of him.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now we're on to item 8I. This is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8I? All right, how about a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8J is a resolution establishing the expanded operating hours at Martin Park Nature Center, and Doug Cooper is here to answer questions, if anybody has any.
Your Honor, just a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Doug, I've had probably as many emails on this project as I've had on emails on anything since I've been on the council. Have you met with the people out there? Have there been some kind of a negotiation? We changed our hours from the original proposition?
Yes, your... Councilmember, in our review of... In making sure that the parks are accessible, you know, all the work that we've done with the Wilderness Matters and the accessible trails, we discovered, similar to the easement that was brought to you before you earlier, we could find no record where the... We came before council asking for a reduction of the hours that were... Martin Park was being operated under. City ordinance states that the parks are open from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., but we could find no record of coming before you all to reduce those hours at Martin Park. So in trying to clean up some of that activity, we discovered, we brought that forward. We did talk with... We did get a number of emails. I took the suggestions from some of the friends of Martin Park to alter the hours from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and staff came up with a compromise that we took to the Board of Park Commissioners. They listened to the comments from the citizens during their meeting. They looked at the compromise that staff came up with, and that is what we're presenting to you today. The park hours will... In the summer months will be from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and we will have staff there every day except for Mondays for that whole time period. And then in the winter months, like we're in right now, it'll be 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Again, staff will be there every day except for Mondays, and we'll take care of those circumstances as we go forward, if the city council approves these amended hours of operation.
Doug, one further question. There'll be no lighting provided, additional lighting out there?
We are not planning on adding any additional lighting out there. The reason we went to 9:00 p.m. in the summer months, as the, you know, daylight savings and the sun sets later, again, we had a few comments from photographers that have been wanting to get into Martin Park legally to photograph the natural fauna and flora and the wildlife, so they're happy about the changing hours as well.
I would move for approval, Your Honor.
And then the... I have a question. And the visitor center, though, doesn't open at 5:00?
No, sir. We'll have normal hours of operation for that. Most circumstances, especially during the school year, when we expect school-age kids, home schools, and our elementary schools to come out there, they'll be on staff from 8:00 to 6:00, approximately.
All right. Doug, thanks. All right, how about a motion then to establish these new operating hours?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike is probably in order? Cast your votes. Item is struck from the agenda. Item 8L, I understand we do need executive session, give council an update? How about a motion then to move item 8L to executive session? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8M is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8M? Claims recommended for denial? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. These claims are denied. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is anyone here hoping to speak under either of these items? How about a motion then to approve the claims? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. James, you have anything for us today? All right, Ed?
Couple of things. One, I'd like to invite the public to a town hall meeting this Thursday at the Tower Hotel on Northwest Expressway for a meeting regarding the new comprehensive plan. We mentioned it briefly earlier. This is a document that doesn't really address kind of the short view, what's going to happen a year, or two years, three years from now. It's the long-term view of what... Where Oklahoma City will head in the next 5, 10, 15, 20 years. And literally, thousands and thousands of hours have been put into this document over about a four-year period. City staff, elected officials, public meetings, social media, and this is all now almost finished. There will be a two-month public input period, and then a review by the Planning Commission, which by state statute would approve. And so this meeting will be from 6:30 to 8:00. If you have just an hour and a half, this would be a good hour and a half to address Oklahoma City events. And that's at the Tower Hotel. It used to be called the Marriott. It's on Northwest Expressway, across from Baptist Hospital or Integris, from 6:30 to 8:00. The second thing I wanted to mention, since we're 38 minutes into the meeting and about to finish, is I read with, as you might imagine, some dismay about the Clayco proposal at the Stage Center site. This is the first I've heard of this kind of TIF or this amount of money. And so I know that we're going to have a meeting with... In groups of four in the back, but I'd like to have not... We can have that meeting back there, although I think journalists should be able to attend those meetings. But I'd like to have dialogue out here about something that, if the numbers I read in the paper, that'd be bigger than any maps project other than the convention center. We talked for an hour and a half about Uber and Lyft. I would hope we could have the same amount of dialogue and policy discussion about something this important. I would hope that, you know, so many important decisions and so much important land is controlled by the Urban Renewal Authority, I'd invite consideration of those deliberations being televised on Channel 20 and trying to move towards the public being able to watch those meetings as well as us. The second thing is, I'd really be interested from the municipal councilor's office about the legal implications of a TIF. I know we've done TIFs within a TIF, but continuing to do a TIF within a TIF within it. And what are the legal implications of that? I don't think anybody can say with a straight face that this piece of property is economically distressed, or blighted, or underserved. Other than maybe the convention center site, it is probably the most prized developable piece of real estate in the state of Oklahoma. And so what are the legal implications of continuing to go to this modality to work in development in this manner? Third, I just would like to address some of what's been put out in the media by advocates of this kind of financing, who would claim or propose that this money, 140, 150, 170 million, however much would go to the developer, wouldn't be possible without the TIF. The development wouldn't occur but for the TIF, and so these property tax dollars that would go to schools and libraries wouldn't be there but for the TIF. The problem with that line of reasoning is that it's not just the 140, 150, 170 million dollars that the city would give. We've already heavily subsidized this piece of property to make it developable. The primary purpose of a streetcar, according to our consultants, and I believe, is not as a public transit tool, but as a real estate development tool. And so that $110 million investment that goes right by this piece of property is making this piece of land developable. The investments, the taxpayer investments in the Mary Gardens, the Boulevard, the Downtown Park, all of these things, and then most importantly, tearing down, whether you liked it or not, a historic iconic Stage Center. We bulldozed it, and then we talked about a massive TIF investment. So now you've got a hole in the ground, there's no environmental considerations that I'm aware of. So you have the most developable piece of real estate, other than maybe the convention center site in the state of Oklahoma. It's going to be developed. If anything's going to be developed, that piece of property is going to be developed. And so I would invite that into the public discourse when people argue that this would occur but for the TIF. There will be development there without a massive subsidy. I haven't heard anything that we're getting in terms of affordable housing, in terms of helping to pay for the operations of the streetcar. I haven't heard anything that the city is getting from the developer. And I think that's concerning. You have an anchor tenant in OG&E, which would minimize the risk of that one building. And so now we're talking about $150 million plus for high-end rental condos, 250 of them. Is that the highest need for the city of Oklahoma City, for taxpayer dollars, to take money from schools and libraries to get 250 high-end rental condos at a price point that I don't think has been seen in Oklahoma City before? I would argue it's not. It's not even close to the highest need. And so I just would hope that we would have as much public discourse on this issue as possible. Thanks.
Just in response to the process a little bit.
Okay.
Urban renewal took RFPs on the development proposal, and when those proposals came in, there was a request from both of the proposers as a TIF to be a part of that. So that's been evaluated at this point in time. And yes, there's been no public process on that at this point in time, other than the discussion of the proposals when the developer was selected at Urban Renewal. It's the city council that establishes the TIF if one is to be established. And so there will be public process, and it will be brought back here, and I assume there will be a full debate at that point in time, just like there has been on other TIFs.
Okay, yes. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, we had the privilege of attending the National League of Cities in Austin. John was down there, you were down there. During that time, I was able to participate in a fair committee meeting, which discussed some economic things. The big issue that was brought up was the Marketplace Fairness Act and a desire to push that forward, and of course, its status is uncertain at this time. For those that don't know about that, right now, on our income tax, when we file an income tax at the end of the year to the state, we're supposed to declare any purchases that are made out of state that are brought in here, that the sales tax has not been collected on. And this is a way to facilitate the collection of those taxes. It's not a new tax, and is a considerable amount of money for all the municipalities in Oklahoma that are not being collected, that could be used for police, fire, and other public services. So it is an issue that we're looking at, both on our legislative committee with Councilman White, and then also with the National League of Cities area. So that was an interesting debate to discuss that. Our situation in Oklahoma is a little bit different in that we are one of the few states that is totally reliant almost on our local area of using a sales tax to fund operations, as opposed to other states that use either income tax or use property tax. So we're in a unique situation, which kind of lowers the priority in a lot of legislators' minds on a national level for the Marketplace Fairness Act. In some special training sessions that they had down there, it was interesting to listen to the conditions of both large cities and small cities on their finances. And my commendation to you, Jim, and your staff for the conservative way that you run the city, because we don't have a lot of the obstacles and problems that other cities are having due to the conservative way and the blessings that we're enjoying financially. Thank you, Your Honor.
Nothing, Pete? Thank you. Appreciate that. While we're going around, I wanted to extend my empathy, I guess is probably the best word, for the Douglas High School football team. Such an unfortunate way their season apparently ended last week, and I don't think they've exhausted all their appeals, and I think some of that's going to play out maybe later today. But I thought I might put together a proclamation that just kind of showed the council's support for how hard they fought this season. You know, we've had the basketball team in here, I guess probably five years in a row now, I think they've won the state championship. And to have the football season end in such a, well, call it undramatic manner, was really unfortunate. And I don't know if there's an equitable solution to what occurred last week, and I hope the young men, you know, find some way of finding a positive resolution to what is, by sports terms, you know, a kind of a sports tragedy. I hate to exaggerate and make a sports term into some real-life scenario, but what is really a tragic situation in my sports encounters. Anyway, I feel for them, because I, you know, when you're in high school and you put all that into a sports season, to have it end and have it feel like it was just taken away from you, has to feel really personal. And I hope they don't feel that way, and I hope they can at some point come to grips with what happened. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank George Vena and the retired firefighters for inviting us to their dinner last night. It was, as usual, very enjoyable and a great time to get to see a lot of old friends. And congratulations to retired firefighter Bill Lebagot for being named the retired firefighter of the year. So, George, thank you again.
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to echo Pete's congratulatory comments on your recent marriage. We're just delighted for you. Carrie will be a lovely first lady for the city of Oklahoma City. We're really excited to have her move here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo the comments from Councilman McAtee about the National League of Cities, and also echo Councilman Pete White's and Councilwoman Sayer's comments. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. You definitely picked a winner, and so I just wanted to say congratulations. And also, to remind her, once she officially moves into Oklahoma City, to change her voting registration on over to Oklahoma City, where she will be a Ward 7 voter. So I'm happy. Ward 7, I got a new resident.
That's right.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, about your comments in reference to Douglas High School. What happened last week was definitely, in my view, a tragedy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pat?
Your Honor, just two questions or comments. One, I'd like to, if I could get a copy of the criteria that was used, MAPS, streetwalk, sidewalk project, and if we use the same criteria on the two other sources, money, the money that we appropriated specially, do that additional work? And secondly, the geo-bond money?
I'm sorry, I'll get you the criteria for the MAPS street sidewalks, and yes, we did use it for the additional sidewalks that were done, but I can get you that criteria, and you ask for what else?
The criteria for the sidewalks that were proposed in the geo-bond issue.
Those are only adjacent to street projects that were... Are being done, but I can get that to you.
That's fine. And secondly, I'd like to congratulate Larry on his fair meeting with the discussion of the internet taxing issue. We've been talking about that, or they were talking about that 10 years ago, my first one on that committee, and I'm glad it's still a matter of interest to them.
We also have a resolution on an item from council today that's been presented to us from Councilwoman Sayer and Councilman Pettis. Has to do with the street name change that kind of alleviates some of the confusion with Shields and EK Gaylord.
This came forward from some citizens, and I just did, it really is a cleanup. When we relocated I-40 a little bit south, it left a little gap in the naming of Shields to EK Gaylord, and I think it was confusing. So we've just moved the name of Shields a little bit further south so that when you get off I-40 now, coming north, it will be EK Gaylord, and going south, it will be Shields, to go across the Shields Bridge.
Makes sense. So if you come off I-40 and you turn right, if you were heading east, you'd be on Shields, and if you turn left, you'd be on EK Gaylord.
Yeah.
Yeah, as opposed to having two blocks of one name.
Of Shields and then turn it into Gaylord. So we just, we have a couple of places where it's a little awkward, particularly for people that aren't familiar with where they're going.
Yeah.
Hopefully, this cleans one of them up.
Yeah, I, I understand. Sounds like a good move.
With that said, I move for approval.
Second.
All right. So we're voting on item 10A, and this is a resolution to initiate the application for that name change. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. I believe that puts us on to city manager reports.
It does. And Aubrey Hammond Tree here is to, is here to introduce the first item.
Good morning, mayor and council. Today, we have a presentation for you. As you know, every five years, we update our consolidated plan, not to be confused with a comprehensive plan. The consolidated plan is the plan that allows us to appropriate all of our community development programs and funds. HUD does require us to complete an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice when we do our consolidated plan process. And we hired Western Economic Services to complete this analysis of impediments, to provide that information so we can use it in the development of our consolidated plan. So here today, I have Rob Godan with Western Economic Services, and we also have Shannon Entz, who's the project manager for this, who's been helping to guide the development of the analysis to impediments. And we'd both be available to answer any questions you might have after the presentation.
Well, thank you, Aubrey. And good morning, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, councilors. I would like to say, first of all, that my firm was hired through a competitive process, but we have been doing these things for 20 years, from Boston to Los Angeles, from Montana to Mississippi, and a lot of places in between. This particular planning process, next slide please, is really something that, it's a compliance exercise, really. We have to do it. HUD likes to have it teamed with our five-year consolidated plan, so ideally, we do it once every five years. It's my understanding they haven't taken a quite this depth approach in the past, and I'm, it's good that you're doing it at this time. The certification that you must affirmatively further for housing is what the exercise amounts to. Now, this certification means that you're going to conduct an AI, take action on the impediments if they're identified, and keep track of your actions, essentially reporting back to HUD about what you did. Now, the content of the AI, next slide please, HUD's has released a fair housing planning guide back in 1996. One of our first AIs was in there. But they really, over all these years, have wanted people to kind of separate the public sector and the private sector and analyze each of those. In the private sector, you know, how are you treated when you went to apply for an apartment? What kind of experiences did you have when you went to borrow money to purchase a home? Those kinds of things. In the public sector, maybe there's something about zoning, maybe there's something about policies, policies and practices. How do people feel about these transactions? What we're really trying to do is assess the barriers to housing choice within this particular study. Now, I want to define these impediments for you, because it's not like, isn't it unfair that housing is so expensive? There are particular things. These are actions, omissions, or decisions which restrict housing choice due to protected class status. Now, the protected classes in this, next slide please, are these groups, race and color, religion, gender, disability, handicap, familial status, national origin, and age, protected under both state and federal law. I, I do note that the city has some laws, and they're missing three categories, disability, familial status, and age, so at some point, you might, might want to revisit that. Nevertheless, the idea is to assess, you know, our housing decisions, the sum of all past decisions, how we've reached today, and assess whether we like those, whether we dislike those, or we want to make a change. Now, this next slide gives us some idea about how public housing has been located. We got a digital file from the PHA and attached a longitude and latitude coordinate to every public housing in the city. And this is a zoom into a portion of the city, but what we do see is that some of the housing is highly concentrated. You know, a couple of years ago, Westchester County out in New York, maybe you've heard of it, maybe you haven't, that's a county that falsely claimed this certification. Then they got sued over falsely claiming it over a period of 2000 to 2006. Well, they, they lost their suit, they had to pay $50 million back to HUD, even though they already spent the money building housing. Well, where'd they build it? They built it in situations like this. They didn't take into consideration the consequences of their actions. They concentrated the housing in certain areas of town, thereby increasing concentrations of racial and ethnic minorities as well as poverty. Next slide. Oh, yes. The same is similar to how housing choice vouchers are used. We see concentrations in these. The Westchester folks had to pay 50 million back, 50 more million to attorneys, and then they were told what to do by Westchester County, or excuse me, New York Court System. These are an audit, you know, these represent an audit, what do we think about today? You know, how do we influence tomorrow if we wish to? Next slide. More directly controllable are home rental assistance locations and those kind of dollars. We see a few scattered around, but they too also seem to be slightly concentrated. And the last is the down payment assistance. The idea is really assessing whether this pattern, or we do have some concentrations, whether that's something we want to continue, or is there something we wish to change about that? You know, one time, I was asked to make a presentation, and please tell us everything. So I spoke for four hours. I promise I won't do anything near that today. What I'm really doing is just providing you with hardly a look from 30,000 feet. So there is a draft document currently available for, it's currently in staff review of the details that represent all of these things. One of the other details relates to housing complaints. I just have one slide for you. These are the issues of each complaint. They're sorted by frequency. Well, it doesn't seem like there's a lot, you know? You can have more than one issue per complaint, 325 complaints. Well, Metropolitan Fair Housing has half as many years and almost three times as many complaints in their data. So it's a little bit of a system that might be frayed, might not be well-understood, and who to turn to, whether it's Metro Fair Housing or go to HUD. Nevertheless, we do have some issues. Disability, race, familial status, and gender are the most frequent basis in these cases. Another thing which we did in this evaluation related to mortgage lending, right? These issues that I just presented were related to the rental market. Those are discriminatory terms and conditions, mostly relating to rental, and failure to make reasonable accommodation for our disabled citizens. The lending data presented on this slide is from the Home Mortgage Disclosure Act. That was passed in the late 70s by our Congress, giving some guidance to both depository and non-depository institutions about reporting the attributes of loan applicants. You know, their race, and their gender, and their ethnicity, their income, and where the housing unit was to be located, as well as what the outcome of their decision was. And there's maybe eight different decisions. They can be closed for incompleteness, they can grant it, the applicant can decide not to take it, they can also originate the loan and deny the loan. And these are the denial rates associated with these groups in Oklahoma City over 2004 to 2012. Now, blacks have 30% denial rate, roughly one in every three. Hispanics, one in every four, substantially higher than whites. Now, this is not unusual. In fact, your denial rates are a little bit less than most other jurisdictions that I've studied, but the problem still remains. This slide is a, those who got a loan, what kind of loan did they get? Of the originations, there's now being reported the attributes of the loan instrument. If it's three percentage point above the comparable treasury security, it's called a high annual percentage rate loan or HAL. So who got these HALs? Blacks and Hispanics. Now, I will say that this HAL activity has dropped off to probably two or three percentage percent of the market, so that's a good thing. You know, it used to be 20 to 25% in 2005 and '06. But it still exists. So we do have foreclosure burden being carried by certain groups, predominantly these two groups, as well. You know, the idea is, what can we do about it? Right? You know, you can talk to bankers, maybe some of you know some bankers. We can also talk to our clientele, help them understand the attributes of a predatory style instrument, you know, what kind of trouble you might get into if you elect to go that route. Same is true with denials. What can we do to help them not be so denied so often? But you cannot conclusively say that our lenders are discriminating, but we do have problems in this market. In keeping with HUD's idea that to separate impediments into both private and public, I've separated this preliminary list. You know, we have more frequent denials for certain groups, blacks and Hispanics, and a little bit more also for females. Apparent predatory lending falls more heavily on black and Hispanic borrowers, discriminatory terms and conditions relating to rental, failure to make reasonable accommodation, and lack of understanding of fair housing laws. Fundamentally, you know, what do we need to do about this? What can we, what do we want to do about this? I do have some suggestions for you to consider. And largely, you know, we're talking about outreach and education. We're talking about those outreach and educational roles for both the consumer and the provider in the rental housing market, the consumers in the home purchase market. With failure to make reasonable accommodations, sometimes that's a product of a market property being built without some ADA features. You might want to think about conducting some targeted testing on those. As well, sponsor some things, co-sponsor some educational activities, maybe during Fair Housing Month in April. The public sector ones, you know, still, we have the same problem, insufficient understanding of fair housing laws. Fundamentally, this identification of impediments is larger than violations to fair housing law, but we need to help people understand what their rights and obligations are, again, both for consumers and providers. We did see that there are concentrations of subsidized and assisted housing existing in Oklahoma City, that nimbyism is used to block sometimes multifamily. Zoning presents a barrier a bit of time in some areas. The lack of public transit was cited in our survey, which I haven't presented any slide results on that quite yet. As well, we have insufficient housing protections in the city laws, I said at the onset of this. Some things we might want to consider doing next. We have a fair housing survey available. It's at this link. I'm not saying that it's, we're closing it soon. It'll eventually need to be closed, but I would certainly encourage each of you to participate in it. It is in it, it is anonymous. If you don't want to be named in it, that's just great. Please go to this location and take the survey. I think what we would also like to do is begin to discuss, have a community discussion, you know, discuss these findings and solutions with your friends, your family, the local leaders, others in the community. You know, we will soon be wrapping up the draft and releasing the final report. You know, we hope to be able to review some potential policy changes and include these actions in the annual action plan of the consolidated plan. But I'm certainly open for any questions. You all kind of look a little like stunned, but I'd be happy to answer anything that you, you, yes, sir.
Can I get a copy of this presentation? I'm not stunned at all by what you presented, not stunned whatsoever. I think as a council, we need to have more discussions about housing, and especially as it relates to public housing. You look where public housing is in Oklahoma City, they are concentrated in Ward Seven. Over the last several years, HUD has decreased its level of funding for public housing entities. So I think now is a perfect opportunity for us to start discussing mixed-use, mixed-income housing. The city of Memphis went through several years ago and begun a process to get rid of their public housing, and make public housing more a mixed-use, mixed-income type of development. Matter of fact, the city of Memphis now only have, they only have one public housing piece of property that, that is left. And they are going through, matter of fact, this past cycle, they applied for a Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant, which they did receive. And so next year, they will apply for the HUD Choice Grant to implement, to finally get rid of their public housing. I think anytime that you have a concentrated area of poor people that does a disservice to the city. I'm a firm believer that people should have choices where to live, and that you should not have a concentrated area of just poor people. It should be mixed. In Ward Seven, we have had our first share of public housing, and I want to say, I'm for helping the people who are not able to help themselves. I'm all for it. But it comes to a certain point in time where we have to create a mixed atmosphere, because how can you be something that you have never seen? How can you be something that you have never seen? Creating a mixed-income environment is beneficial, because you just don't see poor and poor and poor. You see, you'll be able to see poor people and low-income people and middle-income and higher-income working together, living together. But right now, in our city, I hate to say it, but, but we don't have that good of a mix. So this, this report, to me, has been good, because the city, we do need to work on that. So that's my piece dealing with public housing. I definitely do believe that we need to make sure that all of classification of who is protected, we need to make sure that everybody's protected equally under our city laws. And then I think it's time for us to have discussions for as, for our housing practices, especially with banks in our city. I think it's high time for financial institutions to step up to the plate and figure out why they are denying at a higher... they are denying at a higher rate Hispanics and African-Americans. Each bank in our city has that responsibility to make sure that everybody is treated fairly. Matter of fact, some banks get extra federal dollars, but to make sure that they equally spread the wealth, but unfortunately, a lot of times, they say they're going to help the underserved areas, but when it comes out, they really are not helping the underserved areas like they should. So this presentation is not a surprise to me. I think we just need to work on the solutions. Now that we have realized that we do have problems in our city, we just need to work as a council to develop solutions.
All right. Yeah, Meg?
I thought there was kind of a bright side in some of this, and that was the number of down home deposits, and they did look like a down assistance, down payment assistance program. Those looked like they were fairly well-spread around the city in lots south.
That is correct.
I mean, that's a program that, you know, I think our staff has done a great job getting the word out about what's available, and so I would just encourage you to keep working on that one. You know, we do have to take into account the last five years lending environment that we've been in, or our banks, you know, have had their hands tied about what they can land, and so it's a kind of a two-way street. It's been a complicated environment for people to operate within as well.
Mayor?
Yeah.
It's been my experience that the Section 8 portion of it is really not a benefit to the renter, it's a benefit to the landowner. He's got the benefits from it, and that's why you see this concentration of it. I have a neighborhood that's been totally destroyed by Section 8 housing, and it's not because Section 8 housing is bad in and of itself, it's because when every house is a Section 8 house, as the councilman says, then you have that concentration. You end up with everybody, everybody poor. And that's, I've got a neighborhood that's been absolutely decimated by the fact that almost every house in it is Section 8. And I'm a big fan of Section 8 housing, if it's done fairly, if it's spread out, as the councilman says, but the idea that it all is concentrated, you look at the area of the map, in my area, there's an area where it's concentrated to the point that it has decimated a neighborhood. I mean, it is absolutely right, nice houses, brick homes, rolling curved streets, I mean, big trees, they didn't tear up all the trees when they built the neighborhood, and the school system changed. We had busing back in the '60s and the '70s, that all the white people moved out, because all the people with children moved out, all these vacant houses, landlords can't get any money for their house. Section 8 comes in, fills them back up with all really poor people, and now the neighborhood is just flat on its back. Do you have any statistics about the impact, that kind of impact of Section 8 housing?
Well, there are things you can do about that. Baltimore has tried some programs to certify tenants to be a good tenant, and they go through this program, and landlords who accept those vouchers get a higher rate than other vouchers, and so that makes the tenant more attractive, and also disperses them, because only some landlords accept vouchers, not all landlords. And so that's an opportunity. Another opportunity would be to add an additional protection for source of income, so they couldn't legally say, no, thank you.
I have a question, Your Honor. Aren't there federal regulations that require the lending institution to follow these rules?
And follow which rules?
The rules that you've talked about, the lending of money, Hispanics and African-Americans and whatnot.
I'm not suggesting--
And I hate to get the city in a position of trying to enforce federal laws. I think we're really getting to a dangerous ground. Now, if we've got the gaps in the federal laws that we can fill with city ordinance, then we need to look at that, but to try to just blindly comply with federal, to enforce federally regulations, I think we enter into a danger.
Well, I'm not, my actions are not to enforce banking regulations.
Well, are you on the federal regulations, regulations?
Yes, sir.
To the extent that you listen to them, you are in--
I'm hoping that my recommendations, that we conduct outreach and education to the consumer about how to keep, how to get good credit and keep it, that's what I'm suggesting.
Is that a safe approach?
That's, it can be if you want it to be. It's entirely up to you. If you don't like this suggestion, then I need to hear that, and, you know, we can take it out.
Can you, I didn't understand what you were saying about halfway through, you said that city needs to look at, maybe it sounded like there was a deficiency, we were missing something in our ordinance, like there were three classes, what were you saying there?
Yeah, there are apparently four fair housing. There are three classes that are missing in ordinance 26, 36 to 46, something like that, and it's a simple fix, since they're already covered under state and federal law. You could just bring it up to current.
Okay. Well, did you look at our Community Development Block Grant Program and how we're using those funds, or?
I'm sure you're using them well.
I'm asking--
Actually, the CDBG requirement originated from the CDBG program to affirmatively further fair housing.
But did you look at them and, did you study them, or was this in any way part of this analysis?
Just some of the programs that supported housing.
Okay. Thank you.
I didn't hear an answer to my question, and maybe I ask it so many different ways, it's hard to answer, but do you have any statistics as to the impact on the neighborhoods? Not on individuals, but on the neighborhoods, on what happens when this concentration occurs? Does it not, does it not produce a negative effect, worse than it would have been without it?
The concentrations of poverty, whether they're with and without Section 8 vouchers is well documented in the research about why that is a negative, and I'm with you on this and trying to disperse that.
Is there, are there possible ways to not permit Section 8 housing if there's already a high concentration of Section 8 housing in that specific area?
I'm sure there are. There are communities in California that say, no Section 8, but they also get sued.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying eliminate them. I'm saying, once you have a block where every house is Section 8, and on one side of the street, would it be, would it be possible, say, you can't have another Section 8 housing on the other side of the street?
I suppose it's possible.
I mean, I can take you to a neighborhood that is, that is really a sad situation, because you have people in the, you have homeowners that are there, that are trying to protect and stay in their homes, and they're unable to do it, because the whole atmosphere changes when almost every house is Section 8. When you have one here, one here, then you get what the councilman's talking about, you get that diversity, where people are different, and they have to learn to live together. But when you get it where you have one homeowner, and then eight houses in a row are Section 8, you change the whole situation. It's a sad, it's a sad situation, it really is. And for a program that's supposed to be designed to help people, you're only helping the landlord, you're not helping the tenant, because he's still living in a bad situation that he was in before, because the whole neighborhood has changed.
What I'm hearing you say is, we need some ideas on how to disperse this population, and I agree with you.
Can I just ask Aubrey a question? So where, what do we do with this? Where do we go from here? What's the next step? I mean--
We are using this information so that when we develop our consolidated plan, all of the programs that we utilize through our Community Development Block Grant Programs can respond to this in the ways that he mentioned, in the dissemination of all of our funds, and in the participation that we have with all the groups that we work with, we could coordinate things like public outreach and education about how to apply for and receive loans, and those are the types of things that we do in the Community Development Program anyway, so this helps us target some of those efforts that we might do within the planning department.
So would this help guide some of the Community Development Block Grant Funds, the four to five million a year?
It could possibly do that, and Shannon, would you like to add anything to that?
Sure. Okay.
This is definitely a document that speaks to our consolidated plan of home, CDBG, ESG, all of our federal funds we receive. We will definitely take some recommendations out of this. We'll even have, as we talk in the community, about what this means, and come up, ask them for ideas of how we should address it. Mr. White, you mentioned a very good thing about, a point about concentrations, all of you have. It's also about educating landlords. It's also a dialogue with the housing authority and some other people, OFA, Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency. It's a dialogue with a lot of individuals who are kind of more in charge of this than even we are, but this information is very helpful to us. We will include this information, as well as recommendations and input from the public in the survey, in our consolidated plan, and we will do this every five years to review and see where we are.
Thank you. All right. Anything else?
Not on this side, but moving on to the next--
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Moving on to the November sales tax and use tax questions. We've had a couple of sluggish months, haven't been bad months, but a little bit under target on sales tax, and we had a little bit better month for November. I think the interesting thing is that year-to-date, through the first five months of the fiscal year, we're within 0.1% of our target, so we're, that's pretty good news. But then, with the OPEC decision last Thursday, we don't really know what that will do to us over the next several months, so--
Well, how does that affect sales tax? Because since we don't get sales tax on gasoline sales, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so that's more discretionary dollars our consumers have to spend on taxable items.
That's one way to look at it.
Right. Okay, so I understand the long-term consequences of people having stock in our energy companies and retirement accounts and all of those things.
Or less growth, or--
Or unemployment.
In the energy sector.
Yeah, I think in a bigger picture perspective--
So there's a pro and con to the OPEC decision, and we really don't know how that's going to play out over the next several months.
Yeah, but on a short-term basis, I don't know that negative repercussions would show up.
No, there could be more discretion, discretion on spending during the Christmas season, it could be a positive.
If people are spending more on retail items than they are on gasoline, we could sexually see an increase in sales tax just for the--
I really like your glass half-full analogy.
It has the same impact on a reduction in income taxes. More disposable income is now available to the consumers, but the negative impact on all the related industries associated with oil and gas, exploration and production is potentially--
Well, and the psychological impact, if my company is exploring or drilling fewer wells, then perhaps I should tighten my belt a little bit. I mean, you have that, so maybe I'm not going to spend as much money.
Well, and we saw that with the proposed federal shutdown from a few years ago, the people held back on spending because of what may happen, and that could manifest itself again.
Yeah, okay. Well, we have executive session. Citizens to be heard. Is there anyone here hoping to be heard? All right, well, we have executive session, we'll be back.